This meeting is now being recorded.
All right, I'm gonna call the work session for the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillors Pitts.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Brody.
Here.
Stare.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
Pictionary.
Present.
All right, the first item, it looks like we have budget committee interviews, and I'm looking. Is it Neil you're taking this? Oh, there you are.
Indeed. Good evening, Mayor, and Council, you're right, tonight we've got budget committee interviews for the vacancies that we currently have in wards three and four. We have five applicants tonight that are here for interviews. You've got the standard questions for budget committee interviews in your AIS packet as attachment number one. Typically applicants are interviewed in the order that they're listed in the AIS, but the council can elect to interview in whatever order you would like tonight. And so when the council is ready, AJ or Neil will pull up the first applicant. I'll drop off and will be available for questions, but can pop back up once the interviews are complete.
All right, perfect, so the last few times we've done this, it's worked pretty well, we've started with sort of a round robin theory on asking the questions, and we're gonna do that going through these applications. Unless anybody's got questions, I think we're ready. Does anybody have questions about the process?
What I was gonna suggest, Mayor, was that since we always start with Ward 1, we start with Ward 6 tonight.
Hey.
Well, I'll give them time to prepare, I'll do the first one, and then we can do it in reverse order.
I'm ready.
You were born ready. All right, AJ, you wanna bring up the first applicant?
Sorry, my unmute was not working correctly. So our first applicant is Darlene, and I apologize if I pronounce her last name wrong, Raish, and she should be able to show her camera and unmute her mic at this point.
Hello, Darlene, can you hear us?
Muted. Okay, am I unmuted now?
You are unmuted now, we can hear you loud and clear, we still can't see you, though.
Oh, here I go. I'm borrowing a computer so you can see me. So, my computer doesn't have a camera.
There you are.
I can adjust it, you can see my face. Is that better?
That's perfect. All right, so we're gonna go through and read you a couple of questions. I'm gonna read all the questions to you, so as we work through this and everybody else is gonna take notes, and then we'll go from there. You ready to get started?
Okay.
Why are you interested in serving on the Budget Committee?
Well, I grew up in Springfield, I was raised and went to Thurston High School, and then I went away to work, but then I moved back because after I retired, this is where I wanted to live. And I've seen the city grow and expand over the time, you know, visiting my parents, and I would just like to help shape the future of Springfield. I've been very excited about the revitalization of downtown Springfield, making it a destination, and also the Gateway area. So I rarely have to go to Eugene anymore to do any business, so I'm really sold on Springfield.
All right, thank you. Can you describe your professional and personal experience as it relates to your desire to become a Budget Committee member?
Well, I served four years on the Willamalein Budget Committee, and that gave me a little bit different perspective because I worked with military recreation. This gave me a chance to see a more government-type recreation with the different sources of revenue that they use for generating their budget income. And I learned about the Team Springfield concept where the Willamalein and the school district, and I think Sub and the city all worked together to, you know, make Springfield a better place. But professionally, I was a Recreation Director and I worked at the Naval Postgraduate School in Monterey, California. And I oversaw the fitness program, the special events, single sailor program, the information, tickets and tours program, the flying club, the marina, and the department's marketing department. And I was responsible for preparing and consolidating the various budgets into one budget for the Recreation Department, and I would have to justify any renovations to facilities and equipment purchases as well. And I received a small purchase warrant so that I could sign purchase orders up to $5,000 and resale up to $50,000. So that's my background.
Perfect. Can you describe your familiarity with the city's budget?
Well, you know, I really don't know a whole lot about the city's budget, but I would hope that I could get some fresh eyes. But I do know certain elements that are required in the budgets for fire and safety and maintenance of the infrastructure, and as a property owner, I'm well aware of my assessments by the city.
While all of Springfield services seem to have strong support from different areas of the community, it is often necessary to prioritize services for budgetary reasons. How would you go about the task of establishing priorities among services?
Well, I would look first for any essential services that might be required by law or the city, or the state, or the county. And then I would look at services that were needed or used by the majority of the residents to maintain their quality of life. And then I would look to see if there were ways that the city could help subsidize some of these services for low-income residents.
Oftentimes, the members of the Budget Committee have different opinions on how the citizens' money should be spent. What is your experience with working as a member of a diverse group and helping to ensure that all opinions are heard and considered?
Well, my experience working with the military provided me the experience of working with people of all different regional and cultural backgrounds, and also people of various ranks, from recruits to admirals and generals. And I worked overseas in South Korea, and I also worked in Germany. So I have done some, I love, my hobby is traveling, so I love experiencing new places and new people and new food. So, and I currently volunteer on three boards myself right now. So I'm working with people, you know, in that situation. And then, at my last employment, I was the coordinator for the Navy-wide Star Service Program, which was a customer service program that was required of all employees in the Moral Welfare and Recreation Department.
If you were on the Budget Committee and were looking at one of the city's services to decide how much it should be funded through general taxes and how much should be funded through specific fees on customers, what questions would you want to have answered in order to make your decision?
Well, I would want to know who the beneficiaries of the service provided, who would be benefiting, and what would be the ability for them to pay, and then how necessary would this service be to the community? And if there would be any grants or any other sources of revenue that might be available. Also, I would maybe look within the budget itself to see if there could be some money that could be reallocated.
And then how do you think the work of the Budget Committee will improve our community?
Well, I think having elected officials and members of the general public working together on the Budget Committee would help build trust and in the development and execution of the city's overall plan. And I really think it would aid in the transparency of government.
All right, great. That was the last question. We are gonna continue to interview for the night, and then somebody's going to be in contact with you and let you know what our decision is. Thank you so much for coming.
Okay, thank you very much.
AJ, I think we are ready for the next person, and the person is gonna be Joe.
Our next interview is going to be Irene Henham, and bear with me and I will get her pulled up here. And Irene, you should be able to unmute your microphone and share your camera.
Yeah, I think so. Let me adjust here. Okay, I think I am visible and ready. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear and see you. Thank you.
Excellent, okay.
So, thank you for coming, and I'm gonna grill you now, you ready?
Oh, definitely.
All right. Only because Leonard told me I had to go first, so.
That wasn't very nice of him, I know.
No, he threw me under the bus quickly. All right, so the first question I have for you is, why are you interested in serving on the Budget Committee?
Um, I think that, for me, the government is the people, and we are all part of the government. And I want to, I've always been interested in politics and government, and I think the Budget Committee is a great way to be involved in my community. I think that, you know, we all have these grand ideas of things that can get done in our community, but the reality is that there is a budget and that things need to be paid for, and that part of it interests me, the practicality of the Budget Committee. And also, I've lived in Springfield. I did not grow up here, but I have lived in Springfield for more than 20 years, and I love this community, and I want to improve it in any way that I can. I like a lot of the improvements that have happened since I have moved here. Like Darlene said, the revitalization of downtown has been outstanding, and I'd like to see that spread throughout our great city here, and I just wanna contribute and make it a better place for all of us.
Thank you. So, could you please describe your professional and personal experience as it relates to your desire to become a Budget Committee member?
I have had a lot of different professions in my life, my working life. When I first moved to Oregon in 1987, I worked for Borden Chemical, which I believe is now Heinecks, down by the river down there, as a laboratory technician. I have been a public school teacher, I taught third grade in Lebanon, Oregon. I have been a substitute teacher in the Springfield Public Schools. Now I work in the field of landscaping, because I, one of the things I learned about myself over the years is that I prefer to be outdoors and work with my hands. I am the past Lane County Softball umpire's commissioner. I officiated high school level sports in the community for around 10 years until my knees wouldn't let me do that kind of thing anymore. And I currently serve as the House District 12 Chair for the Democratic Party of Lane County.
Okay, and describe your familiarity with the city's budget, please.
I read through the budget. Boy, that takes some work reading through the budget. Boy, it's quite a page-turner. But from what I could see, our budget seems to be well thought out, well crafted. Nothing really stood out to me as being a glaring problem in the budget. You know, just a few little minor things. I know that the three main areas of the budget are public works and then police, fire and safety. Those things take up the majority of the budget. I noticed that healthcare costs for employees obviously is an issue and keeps going up. And that's just something in our society in general that we need to address. Anyway, I was impressed with the efforts made to consolidate services whenever necessary and to, it just seems like it's a well-thought-out budget.
Thank you. And while all of Springfield services seem to have strong support from different areas of the community, it is often necessary to prioritize services for budgetary reasons. How would you go about the task of establishing priorities among services?
I think seeking public comment is really important, communication with the public is important between government, and, well, we are all the government, but between citizens and those people who choose to serve in government. And I would want services that have broad community support obviously would be a priority, and also required services need to be a priority. But, you know, sometimes councils and committees need to make tough decisions and fun things that maybe don't necessarily have broad community support. And I think in that instance, you go ahead and do what is right, and you explain, you use your skills and communication to explain to the public why that is important and necessary to make the community better for all of us.
Thank you, excuse me. Oftentimes, the members of the Budget Committee have different opinions on how the citizens' money should be spent. What is your experience with working as a member of a diverse group and helping to ensure that all opinions are heard and considered?
I too served in the military, I was a member of the US Army Reserve. So I think for me, that was probably one of the areas in my life where I had the most opportunity to work with people from diverse backgrounds. I also served on the Springfield Safety and Respect for All Committee at some point in the past, in the year now, I cannot remember. But it was at a time in our city's history when there was a lot of debate around protections for citizens from the LGBTQ community, and this committee was put together, and it was a diverse group of people, some from more conservative backgrounds, more conservative religious backgrounds, and also members of the LGBTQ community, and just talking through issues and trying to find consensus. And I thought it was one of the most rewarding experiences I've had. My experience really is that most people agree on most issues. We just differ on how to, on the approach to take to solve problems.
Thank you. So, if you were on the Budget Committee and we're looking for one of the city's services to decide how much should be funded through general taxes and how much should be, how much through specific fees on customers, what questions would you want to have answered in order to make that decision? Or assist you?
Yes, and I know sometimes those decisions are really difficult. I think I would want to know how fee increases would affect low-income folks, people on fixed incomes, people, working people. I think sometimes we rely on fees when it's difficult to raise revenue in other ways, but fees are, you know, they're hard on people that don't have much money. But on the other hand, if it's a service that isn't broadly used by the public, I understand that using fees as a way to help support the, you know, help support that is important. And I also think that sometimes it's important to look for other funding sources like grants and cooperation with other governments and other, you know, the private sector.
Yes, thank you. So the last question is, how do you think the work of the Budget Committee will improve our community?
Well, I think the Budget Committee, it's kind of like the keystone for how our city operates, because like I said earlier, the practicality of it is that you need, we need money to operate the city and to have the city work for all of us. And, you know, what I want is, I want there to be room in our budget to help with build affordable housing in Springfield. I want our city to continue to grow the way it has grown so greatly in the downtown area. I'm excited about, you know, the opportunities for Glenwood and the Gateway area and just all parts of Springfield. And I just wanna make, one of the things, I really support the use of cahoots to help with people who are having mental health crises. It seems like right now, in general, in our society, we have a lot of issues with homelessness and mental health struggles. And I think funding cahoots is very important, and also, you know, having resources available to help the homeless. And I just want to improve the community for all members of the community, and I want, just to make it, Springfield a better place to live for all of us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good evening, we'll be in touch with you to let you know on our decision.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Irene. So, the next interview is Counselor Woodrow's gonna do, and AJ, I think we're ready for the next person.
And that will be Rosemary Nord. And, Rosemary, you should be able to unmute your microphone and enable your camera.
Hi, Rosemary.
Hello.
Okay, I thank you for coming and thank you for applying, and we will start with a few questions.
Okey-dokey.
Why are you interested in serving on the Budget Committee?
Well, I'm gonna be very candid, that I had not really considered serving on the Budget Committee. Other than just after what our country has been through over the last four years, I realized that the only good part of it was, for me, was that I learned a lot about government. And I think I just always figured that running for senate, running for mayor, governor, whatever, was just something other people did. And I had been thinking, well, shoot, why didn't I ever do anything like that? Maybe, you know, if I wanna see changes in government or anything, I should step in the ring a little bit. And that's about as far as I went with that, and then my one-time neighbor, Leonard, knocked on my door, and knowing that I had kind of a lot of signs in my front yard and stuff showing my support for a particular candidate, he figured I was fairly interested in government, and so he asked me if I might be interested in joining the Budget Committee, and I looked at him and said, wow, that's interesting, because I've had thoughts about wanting to throw a towel in there somewhere, and so I said yes. So that was my interest in the Budget Committee.
Thank you. Describe your professional and personal experience as it relates to your desire to become a Budget Committee member.
Okay, well, I graduated from San Diego State University, and my degree was in Recreation Administration with an emphasis in therapeutics. So I did a lot of work with people with various disabilities, and I did that for a while until I, well, I guess my first job out of college was working at the Conejo Valley Park and Recreation District, which is down in Thousand Oaks, California. I just recently, I've been in Springfield now for six and a half years, but I'm kind of a lifer Californian, so I'm trying to become an Oregonian to some degree. I worked in that Recreation and Parks District, and I was the league manager, so I ran the various sports leagues for men and women and such during that, and then I worked with the individuals with various disabilities in a community setting. The organization was called Friends of Handicapped Children, which at this point in time would not be PC, but that's what it was called back then. And I was a supervisor for the house parents and the other workers that came in to do things with the kids. And I did a lot of things. We took them bowling and water skiing and snow skiing and just lots of good stuff. And then I heard that the LA City Fire Department was looking for women candidates to have as firefighters. They didn't have any female firefighters yet, so I started going through the process, and the next thing you know, I was in the drill tower and I made it out into the field of the LA City Fire Department. And so, I, you know, as far as how that relates to the Budget Committee, I mean, I've been a single working woman, and I'm a mother, and I've always been able to manage my own budget, and I've never lost my home or anything else due to lack of finances. So it's kind of surprising to me sometimes, but I've been able to manage it. So I do have an understanding of, you know, how many works and where it needs to go for what it needs to pay for, so.
Thank you. Describe your familiarity with the city's budget.
Well, that's an interesting question, because my first thought is, I don't have any familiarity with the city budget other than I did go on the website and I found the City of Springfield Fiscal Year 2020 Proposed Budget, the 298-page document, and I will say that I have not yet completely read that. And it's, so there's a lot for me to learn. I really am not at all connected to how the budget operates and that. For me, it would all be a learning experience.
While all of the Springfield services seem to have strong support from different areas of the community, it's often necessary to prioritize services for budgetary reasons. How would you go about the task of establishing priorities among services?
Well, you know, being that I could said I haven't ever been involved in budgetary management, I guess, not knowing what all the parameters are, I would, just from my own vantage point of how many, I feel my money should be used, is that has to go to the most necessary things first, like, you know, any immediate needs in the community, any safety hazards. So, you know, I mean, bottom line, it would be something that I would learn as I went, and I'm a good learner, so I know that I can learn how to prioritize those things. I mean, I have interest in, you know, health services for children and seniors and food programs and safety for our roads, and obviously an interest in police and fire services. And so, I'll just learn as I go, but I do have some understanding, I believe, of where priorities might be, but that's something I would be discussing with. might be. But that's something I would be discussing with the people in the committee.
Thank you. Oftentimes, the members of the Budget Committee have different opinions on how a citizen's money should be spent. What is your experience with working as a member of a diverse group and helping to ensure that all opinions are heard and considered?
Okay, well, as one of the first female firefighters in Los Angeles City, I will say that I was the, a part of the diversity in every fire station I worked at that was completely men. Eventually, there might be one other woman on one of the other platoons, but I worked with all men. And it was great in Los Angeles. I mean, there, we, there was Asians, there was Latinx, there was all, all the BIPOC people that you could think of that are hired on the Fire Department. So it was, it was a refreshing place to work in that. I wasn't just around all white people all the time. I would have liked to have been around a few more women, but that, that's, that's developing more and more now. So different opinions are what makes the world go around, I think. And open discussion is the only way that adults can figure out what, which direction we want to go.
And I just lost the question.
I got it. Which one? Did you think the last one?
Did, did anybody else lose the questions? I lost the quest. Wait a minute, here comes.
Okay. I was going to read it to you.
Okay. That if you were on the Budget Committee and were looking at one of the city's services to decide how much should be funded through general taxes and how much specific fees on customers, what questions would you want to have answered in order to make your decision?
Um, well, you know, as I'm going ahead and being totally honest with y'all, I just have to say that I really never thought about the fact that there are general taxes for things and specific fees for other, on customers for things, until I thought about the fact that, well, wait a minute, I understand that when I pay my taxes, I'm paying for fire and police and public schools. And I don't know what all else. I mean, I'm, I'm, that's automatic in my feelings that paying taxes are bringing the community good things. And then I also have been assessed fees for things like the city managing easements or sidewalks or street sweeping and various things to keep the, the area looking safe and secure and good and stuff. So I, I will just have to kind of be guided and just learn about where certain things. You know, I don't know if there's a standard where these types of things get budgeted by tax dollars and these types of things get budgeted by customer assessment. So that will be another big learning experience for me. And I'm, I'm, I'm ready for it.
Thank you. How do you think the work at the Budget Committee will improve our community?
Well, you know, my, my main thing is, I mean, obviously, proper handling of the funds of the city is imperative to any community. And, you know, none of us want to see anything get forgotten. And there's, there's, I'm certainly bet that there's constituents, constituents that are putting in their bids for things that they want to have improved on. And, and I'm sure that never stops. And, and there are needs everywhere. So I think that the proper fiscal management of the money of the city is what any city needs in order to make the city a place where people feel safe and secure and they want to live.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You, you will be contacted as to what our decision is tonight. But thank you very much for putting in your application and, and doing the interview.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. AJ, I think we are ready for the next person.
Our next.
Leonard is going to ask the questions.
Our next applicant is Victoria Doyle. And Victoria, you should be able to unmute your microphone and share your camera.
All right, I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Excellent. Hi, how are you?
Victoria.
Good. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good. Well, you've done this before, so I'll just go right into the questions if it's okay.
Sure. I've got, I've got my answers already written out so that I wouldn't get off track.
Oh, yeah. All right. Well, that's good. I've, I've got mine in writing here in front of me too. So we ought to get along fine. Why are you interested in serving on the Budget Committee?
I'm, well, in 2010, I was living in Cottage Grove and I was sitting in a local hangout. I was complaining about something that the city had budgeted and had done, spent money on. And one of the folks who was near me, who was a local business owner, overheard me. And it was a friend of mine. And he said, well, you can't really complain if you're not involved. And the city has spots for local residents to serve on the Budget Committee, and it can barely fill the positions that they had with 9,000 people in town. And I realized that he was right, that if I'm going to complain about it, I should probably know what the heck I'm talking about. And maybe I should be involved. And, and you know, I, I feel like as Rosemary had mentioned, there's a lot that was going on in the political spectrum. But the truth is, is that we don't have a whole lot of control over what happens in Washington. And we almost don't really have a lot of control over what happens in Salem. But we do have a voice in our own community. And I, and that's why I feel very strongly about getting involved. And so I joined the Budget Committee in 2010. And in our 2009 and in 2010, I actually ran and was elected to the City Council and spent full term as a city councillor in Cottage Grove. The only reason I didn't run again was because I did know I was going to be moving back to Springfield. It's the only time in my life I haven't lived in Springfield. And I didn't think that it was fair to be elected and have people who voted for me knowing that I was going to represent them and then know that I wasn't going to do that. So I opted to not rerun. And after getting here in Springfield, once again, I decided to get involved and join the Budget Committee here. And I've served a couple of terms on the Budget Committee here in Springfield. So I just feel like it's really important to be involved in your local, local town.
Describe your professional and personal experience as it relates to your desire to become a Budget Committee member.
And I've always been interested in budgeting. I help my, my family and different friends who have had trouble with their own personal budgets. And I found that to be really, it was really fun to help them figure out how to do things and how to make their money stretch and their things work. After being on the Budget Committee for City Council, basically 2010 to 2014, to that really gave me a lot of experience with budgeting. And, you know, coming from the private sector into the public sector, you find out that, that there are unfunded mandates. There's just so many rules that don't, that aren't the same as in the private sector. And there's rules that you have to work within. And so it was, it was incredible learning experience for me, knowing that there's reasons why we make the decisions that we do and reasons why you guys make the decisions that you do. And I feel like that helps me be better at making suggestions and, and offering my input so that you guys can make a more informed decision as well. And to, 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 I'm also, I work for a local municipality. I work for Public Works Engineering for the City of Eugene. So I'm already involved in a, a public position. So I understand the difference between the general fund and specific funds and fees and what we have to do with unions and social services. And so I, I have a pretty well-rounded view of of those different things and can really keep an open mind on that.
Thanks. Describe your familiarity with the city's budget.
And so I pretty much have covered that I, I've been involved with the city budget for a while. And I really appreciate the tight ship that our, that our city runs. I think that they make really good and fiscally sound decisions. And then even through those really tough times back in 2008, 2009, where you know, municipalities were really scrambling because the dollars were falling off and things, especially with, you know, taxes and that kind of thing. And they had to really tighten stuff up. I understand that that was a difficult time. And so I'm not really familiar with the new city manager, because it was the previous city manager. And we had a different mayor, although I do, I know Sean, having worked with him in the past as well. So I'm, I'm looking forward to learning how things are still chugging along. I'm, I'm hoping it's still chugging along just as well as it has been in the past.
Yeah, let's all hope so. I have full confidence though. While all of the Springfield services seem to have strong support from different areas of the community, it is often necessary to prioritize services for budgetary reasons. How would you go about the task of establishing priorities among services?
So this is a tough question. Everyone who comes to the table with a budget item feels that their, their item is important, right? It's important to them. And so making those tough decisions, although they're necessary, they're important for the budget to succeed and for us to be able to meet the budgeting that we need to do. I'm a huge proponent of having reserves for future projects. And because unplanned costs and, you know, I also believe in funding our police and our fire. And I have a very personal interest in public works. Making sure that the primary costs are met first. The things that are most important, I believe, in a community, which is safety, security, having good roads. I think we as a community, and I say this from having not been involved, is that we just take it for granted that our toilet's going to flush, right? When we push the, when we push the lever. And I think that people don't realize that there's a pipe underneath the road and there's, there's infrastructure that has to work properly. And so I'm, I'm a real advocate for making sure that those main things are are taken care of. And then we start looking at libraries and social services and the things that really enhance the livability of our community. But I just, I think that that's a really strong basis that we need to start with, and then we move from there.
Great. Oftentimes, the members of the Budget Committee have different opinions on how the citizen's money should be spent. What is your experience with working as a member of a diverse group and helping to ensure that all opinions are heard and considered?
I really like this question, and I thought about it a lot because I'm, I, I sometimes come in and I, I have an idea of exactly what I think something should be. And having served on committees, like I was on the Community Development Committee with the City of Springfield, where they, their job is to use the funds, the federal funds that come in and try to dole those out for different services. And there was a person on the committee who had actually been homeless and who had a a really unique perspective. And so I don't think that diversity necessarily has to do with race as, I mean, of course it does, but it's, it's also has to do with ideas and your personal experiences and things that you've, you've done in your life. And so her, you know, giving her opinion and, and her insight in that really changed the way I had come in thinking. And so I really try, you know, on the City Council in Cottage Grove, we had a private business owner, we had the Director of Head Start. We had just a really unique group that had totally different ideas sometimes about things. And hearing that, it may or may not change how I feel about it, but having that can really make a difference on, on a decision that I make. And so I, I just think it's absolutely essential. One of the things I'm really happy about is to see how many people applied for these two positions, because oftentimes we don't get that diversity in people that apply for the Budget Committee. And so it's really exciting to sit here and hear these other folks that are coming in that have such a, you know, a diverse background. It's really neat. I think you guys are going to have a really good, a tough choice, but some really good options to choose from this time. I think that's awesome.
Thanks. If you were on the Budget Committee and you were looking at one of the city's services to decide how much should be funded through general taxes and how much through specific fees on customers, what question would you want to have answered in order to make your decision? Or what questions?
Okay, so the questions that I came up with, that I would ask is twofold, one for the general and then one for if it was going to be fee-based. How does a service relate to the general community? Meaning, is it for the benefit of the entire community or is it just certain areas of the community? And then what condition, what is the condition of the general fund? Like, is there enough money to, to take it from there? And if there's not, well, then what program or service are we planning to cut to pay for this one? Because I know there's only so much to go around. So we need to kind of look at what, you know, what needs to go to what, what service. When's the last, and then when it comes to fees, when's the last time we raised a fee? If we, for that particular service, okay? And it could have been 10 or 12 years since we changed the fees and the cost of living has gone up. And that might be a way to look at that. And how much is the percentage of the fee increase? And how did we decide that percentage? I'd want to ask the staff how they came up with that. And then the other thing is if we increase the fee, will it in, will it actually cause a lower usage, which would then do the opposite of what we were trying to do by increasing the fee to begin with? So those are some of the questions that I would probably ask of staff when this type of a decision would, would come to the Budget Committee.
How do you think the work the Budget Committee will improve our community?
Since the money being spent is tax dollars and community funds, this is a responsibility that I personally take very serious. And I wish more people would get involved because the committees and the council can really only make recommendations and make decisions based on the information that they have. And the, I think that the council has the best intentions and trying to make those decisions. And so they can only do what they can with what they've been given. You know, I know that none of you are getting rich, being counselors, right? And being on committees and stuff, none of us are making a ton of money doing this. Any money. And so it's, it's more about Springfield. And it's about how we feel about this community. I was born at McKenzie Willamette. I graduated from Thurston High School. I love this community. And I'm so excited about what's happening with the revitalization downtown and the fact that Springfield is just really changing things. It's so cool. And so I want the future of Springfield to be bright and vibrant. And so I hope that my recommendations and my suggestions reflect that, that feeling.
Thanks so much. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your time. I do appreciate what you do for the city.
Thanks, Victoria. We'll be in touch.
Okay, thanks.
All right, AJ, we've got one more, it looks like. And then Cory will do the questioning.
Our last applicant is Stephen Schmunk. And Stephen, you should be able to unmute yourself and share your camera.
Hey, can you hear me?
We can hear you. We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Sorry, I'm a little new at this, so bear with me just a moment. Figure out words. Okay, you should be able to, I guess, see me now.
Welcome, Stephen. All right, I'm going to ask the questions while everyone else jots furiously. Why are you interested in serving on the Budget Committee?
Well, as Victoria Doyle said, I, I don't want to be one, a person that gripes about what's going on without, without having a perspective. I, I think the Budget Committee is a good way for me to get involved in the city, understand the challenges that, you know, you all have to deal with. And and, and, you know, sort of help with, you know, my experience to perhaps, you know, make the city better. And then, and then I, you know, in, in that vein, I really am interested in in downtown. I remember when downtown was a vibrant shopping center. So, you know, I'd like it to be that way again, whether it's all restaurants or, you know, small shops and whatnot. But, but I think it can be vibrant. But, you know, obviously, that's a challenge.
Thank you. So describe your professional and personal experiences as it relates to your desire to become a Budget Committee member.
Well, I was, I was on the Springfield School District Budget Committee at 2010 timeframe. And so I became familiar with you know, the different fund, fund sources and needs of the budget. And, you know, I've been in business for over 50 years in Springfield and I, you know, I, in that time, I learned how to prioritize, how to you know, work with folks and you know, make things happen, sometimes on a limited budget. So I, I think, and I think that, that background hopefully would be a benefit to the, to the committee.
Thank you. So you touched on this a little. Describe your familiarity with the city's budget.
Yeah, I, so I've, I've done this superficially. I, I've, I've looked and I, you know, I understand the the, you know, that some of the different budget categories. Clearly, I don't know where they go. I, you know, and I know that Public Safety and Administration, obviously, the largest, largest ones. But, you know, I can't tell you that I understand any of the details beyond that.
Right. While all of the Springfield services seem to have strong support from different areas of the community, it is often necessary to prioritize services for budgetary reasons. How would you go about the task of establishing priorities among services?
Yeah, so I, you know, I think the council was elected to set the the agenda and set the direction of the city. And I would hope that I could help try to flesh out those priorities in terms of both, you know, fiscal responsibility and and the needs of the citizens, all the citizens.
Thank you. Oftentimes, the members of the Budget Committee have different opinions on how the citizens' money should be spent. What is your experience working as a member of a diverse group and helping to ensure that all opinions are heard and considered?
Well, I've always, well, always, as a younger man, I probably wasn't as tolerant, but I've grown to learn that you really have to put yourself in someone else's shoes, try to think about where they were that morning, why they might be, you know, in a particular mood or what have you, and and try to cut to the core issue, try to help them understand the important issues. But, you know, people are not all the same, but we all should be respected and we all should respect others. And I just think it's, you know, no matter who you are, you have something to contribute. And we we should always listen. You know, we're not going to agree always, but but we certainly should make it clear why we disagree. And I think better decisions come from that.
Thank you. If you were on the Budget Committee and were looking at one of the city's services to decide how much should be funded through general taxes and how much through specific fees on customers, what questions would you want to have answered in order to make your decision?
Well, of course, that's always difficult. But I think the I think the overriding issue is, is you've got to see what the, you know, what it is, what it's providing. I mean, if the city's going to provide services that are frivolous, if you will, then that's more of a user fee. The person should pay for what they're doing. And but if it's a, if it's a generally used and the scale is such that the city can provide it, but not any individual can provide it, then then I think that's something to consider. But, you know, it's all about, you know, how much resources you have and the importance of the particular thing. I'm usually for user fees, but but I do understand that, you know, that's not always possible. And and again, the council would sort of be my direction. What were you looking for? And then and then I would try to help decide how we get it done.
Thank you. How do you think the work of the Budget Committee will improve our community?
Well, I think if the citizens know where their money's being spent and why, you know, that's fundamental of the Budget Committee and and the, you know, the public needs to better understand where the money's being spent, why it's being spent, what the expectation is for the money being spent. So I think the Budget Committee has the unique role of making sure that the community's priorities are allocated properly, given the parameters that the council would provide.
Thank you. That's our questions. And you may have heard, you'll be contacted and folks will let you know, staff will let you know after this meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, all of you.
Thank you. All right. So now we're going to move on to deliberations. And if, before we get sort of started talking about where people's preferences are, remember, we are making two appointments today. Historically, they have been ward appointments, but we can defer. That is not, that's something that is sort of a rule that we followed, but is not sort of locked and written in stone. So with that, I don't know if anybody wants to start by listing their preferences, or if it'd be easier just to go by the ward. Go ahead, Merrily. You're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Just a clarifying question. Who do we have? Who is, who is assigned currently on the Budget Committee that is not in their own ward?
Counselor Woodrow, I've got the list here. And the only individual that's not currently residing in their ward is Holly Bauer Shaper. If I recall correctly, she resides in Ward Two, but serves for Ward Five.
Okay, so we just have one in that in that situation. Okay, thank you.
All right. So going down, Dave, I don't see anybody jumping into this, so maybe we'll go in reverse. Go ahead, Leonard.
Well, we're, I think, I guess I've got a question, too. So the two openings are for Ward Four and for Ward, which one?
Three.
For for wards four and three. I, I think, am I remembering correctly that Irene is from Ward Three?
Yes. Irene and Darlene are from Ward Three.
I think Irene and Darlene are both highly qualified. If I were to have my wish, I I would, I would probably cast my lot for Irene. I know Victoria has served with distinction in the Budget Committee before. And I, it certainly wouldn't break my heart if she got the the Ward Four appointment. Although I think that, I think that Rosemary was a fine, was a fine applicant.
Okay. Anybody else? You ready to go, Joe? Okay.
Sure. So I can, I concur with, partially concur with with Leonard, my esteemed colleague. So I think Darlene has got a great background, very well experienced with budget, probably more so than a lot of folks here. So I would recommend her for the Ward Three appointment. And then for the Ward Four appointment, I think that I was very impressed with both, Victoria's got a great resume, and she would be in her right for Ward, so to speak, as opposed to like Holly was in replacing Ward Five. So she would be an automatic Ward Five representative, so to speak, and that, if that makes any sense. But I like Victoria. And my other choice would be with Steve. He's got a very analytical mind. You can tell by the way he answered his questions. And he's got a great background as far as a business sense, which makes sense on a Budget Committee. So I would, I would recommend Darlene for Ward Three placement. And then, as a coin toss with Mr. Schmunk and Victoria Doyle for the Ward Four appointment.
All right. Who wants to go next? Steve?
I like Darlene for Ward Three. I ain't going to details, but everybody else is gonna do that. Victoria, she's got lots and lots of experience. I really was impressed with Mr. Schmunk, who comes from the business world, a little bit different view of things. Yeah, he's got a good handle on things. And I like seeing there, too, but we can only select two. So those are the three that really stood out to me.
Do you have a preference order for Victoria and Steve? Are you saying it's kind of a coin flip here?
Kind of a coin, Victoria.
Come here, Lee.
I pretty much echo Steve. I had Darlene for Ward Three, and I had a toss up between Victoria and Stephen. The one thing I did want to say was how much I appreciated Rosemary's application and interview. And I would love to see her apply for other committees and to be involved, because she has, she has an interest, she has a passion, and I'd love to see her energy involved in another committee. So I hope that that by people not mentioning her, that she doesn't get discouraged, because I'd love to see her apply for something else. So side, I'm pretty much lining up with Steve. I have Darlene for Ward Three, and I have a toss up, Victoria and Stephen. And I, it really is a toss up. I don't know that I've got a preference, because I like, I like the comment that Steve made as far as having a business person. We haven't, we haven't necessarily had somebody that's been a business person. We've had, we've had a lot of volunteers that are oriented towards serving, but we haven't had a business person. And I like, I like the fact that Stephen has that business background. So I probably would slightly lean towards him, but I would be comfortable with either Victoria or Stephen.
Okay, Cory?
So I have a preference for folks being from their ward. I know I'm new, and I just think, I just would, I just prefer that. I also just appreciate everyone applying in Ward Three, which is my ward. I thought Darlene and Irene were both great. I'm feeling a little stronger about Irene, like Leonard. And then, since Rosemary's from Ward Four, I realized that she hasn't done budget committees before, but the fact that she stepped up to serve in that ward, that would be my preference. And so those are, those are mine, Irene and Rosemary.
Perfect. Okay, that, Damian?
Oh, let's go with Irene and Steve.
Okay. So if I'm kind of counting noses and keep me honest here, Neil, I see enough people to move Darlene forward. And then really, it's a toss up between Steve and Victoria.
Cory?
I think there were three for Irene and three for Darlene.
I counted, I counted, I counted, I counted Steve, Mo, Leonard had Darlene as a two, Merrily had him as a one, Pish Adam is a one. I have three for, I have three for Irene, which is Damian, Cory, and Leonard.
Mm hmm. Actually, Sean, what I, what I intended, I mean, if we were gonna go by by ward, I preferred Irene for Ward Three, and then I preferred Victoria, I think, for Ward Four.
Okay, so then, okay. But in the, okay, hang on. So that would leave us unsure between Irene and Darlene. And then, all right, and then between Victoria and Steve, I think I've got, got enough for Victoria. But that's assuming that people are, that, there's a lot of coin flips here. So go ahead.
Yeah, and I've got, I've actually kind of got three and four with Victoria and Steve, four with Steve having four.
Yes, that's why I want to verify where everybody's asked. I heard a lot of sort of coin flips between like,
Right.
Between you.
I kind of, I kind of the leaning towards votes as kind of a Stephen, and same thing. So, okay, that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay.
So we can't go wrong with either one, as far as I'm concerned. But but I think that the breadth that I'm getting is leaning towards Steve.
Okay, so I'm looking around, we're agreeing, Steve. And then, and then we're, and then we're a coin flip between, between Darlene and Irene. If I'm gonna give people a chance to change any preferences they have, my preference is Darlene, between the two of them.
Yeah, that's mine.
Yeah. Okay, so then, then, if you guys can bring for Darlene for Ward Three, and then Steve for Ward Four. We'll do, we will, we'll bring this back for appointment on the 19. Perfect. Any questions before we, Leonard, you look quizzical.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, was there a tiebreaker for Ward Three that I wasn't aware of?
Yeah, the,
Sean just,
Oh, okay. All right. Noted. Thank you.
I'm a person, too.
He just did it very surreptitiously.
Okay. Perfect, Neil. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item looks like it's Jeff in the capital improvement plan.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. And we'll try and keep this in 15, 20 minutes, I think, given the time. So be respectful of your time. Here tonight to discuss the city's capital improvement program and get feedback and direction regarding the update of the document from the City Council. Just as a little background, so no one has to dig into the almost 200 page document. It's just a reminder that the CIP is a tool that projects or prioritizes projects and programs forecasted revenues for those projects. And then really starts with master planning, so those 20 year plans, and then ultimately culminates with the capital budget. One thing to note, which is in the documentation provided, is that the traditional schedule for the update of the CIP, you know, no longer really syncs up with the annual budget update. The draft CIP, or the draft capital budget is usually finished in February, which is before the public review process is completed for the CIP. So it kind of cuts that out. Similar to this year, we're already, the budget's prepared, everything's done, and we would have, you know, we're supposed to be in front of you guys, the council, this month for updating and adopting the CIP. So it's kind of missing that link. So one of the proposals for council discussing, give direction on is regarding the update of that calendar to better align with the budget calendar. And then another thing is, given the eventful year we've had, this CIP update hasn't really followed the traditional path. And so it's also given an opportunity to kind of take and look at it with fresh eyes and potentially update the document, the schedule, those sorts of things, and really looking to get feedback from council on that update of the document and that sort of thing.
Merrily?
Just have a clarifying question. Please, please identify the relationship or the difference between the street levy, the street bond, and the CIP.
So the the levy or the, I said, the bond was revenue, yeah, the bond is just capital revenue that then was programmed in the CIP. So like, we've been working on an update, and one of those updates is just kind of truing up the CIP with current, you know, current projects. So projects completed, projects that are ongoing, like the two that the council awarded at the previous meeting. And so, in essence, the bond was just additional revenue that went into the street fund that was programmed towards those specific projects which were identified in the bond.
What I'm looking for is Mill Street.
Mill Street.
And I didn't see it mentioned anywhere.
Mill Street is in the,
That's my favorite.
Yep. And so actually, I have good news. So one of the things we have been working on is, I just heard from Christie Creer, who's managing that, is that ODOT just put the RFP for consultant services on the street. So that is one of the things that we've been waiting for is, we've had all of our stuff done, the IGA councils approved that, and we were ready to go. And so we should start seeing some momentum, some things moving on that project very soon.
Great. That was, that's my pet street. And so I was, I was looking for it, and I didn't see it. Now, wait a minute.
I know. Every time I walk out there, I just think, huh, we should have been out here a year ago, or, you know, when we've gotten this program. But we've kind of been held to, you know, with the federal process, we're kind of, you know, at ODOT schedule, relying on ODOT.
Hey, I'm thrilled you had an answer for me. That's, you know, that's a plus that you had, that you had an answer. So I'm good.
I'm glad I had good news answer.
Jeff, I'm pretty sure that everybody here is, would make any call we needed to to make. Jeff, I'm pretty sure that everybody here is would make any call we needed to, to make sure Mill Street got done since we commit, like we made commitment to the community that it would get done. So feel free to keep then in any way we could support that. Steve, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. And by the way, I think this go around a mill street will be the third one that I've seen. I've really been around. I actually went through all 147 pages on this thing today. Can you believe that? But it seems like there's some projects in there that no longer need to be there. So, and I can't tell you which ones now, but why would that be?
So that, and that happens every update, especially when we're on a biennial update process because we'll complete projects, they'll be in there or things get reprioritized. Some projects get postponed for other priorities. And I think that's the one thing when I look at the schedule that's missing because you know, pretty much staff has the capital budget prepared, but then we're not getting in front of the planning commissioner, the council for a CIP review until a month and a half after that happens. And so especially in the last couple of years, there's been a lot of dynamic things going on. And so that, that is one of the things. So if the council chooses to move forward with the current update, that's one of the things that we've done is we haven't really had the traditional public process with solicitation of projects and things like that. But it's been truing up the CIP to what projects have been completed, what projects have kind of slipped due to funding issues or, you know, with the bond projects jumping in front of the line and in the queue. And so that would be what you would see. And so that's why the proposal is to do a comprehensive update for a 2327 CIP and align that with adoption in December before the capital budget or before the budgeting process starts.
Yeah, this, this proposal, product, whatever it is, is really well done. I, I went through many, many of the items on it, very easy to understand. So you've done a good job.
Thank you. One of the updates I'm looking at, what I've been reviewing, some other agencies who get a lot of federal funding is I think one of the struggles is trying to figure out how we earmark money for match. Because a lot of the federal aid projects that we have require a local match. And so tracking that and in looking at how they utilize their CIPs for tracking when we commit funds to match federal agency funds and, and better representing that in the CIP. I think that's one of the things I, I just get questions internally from staff as well that are working on projects. It's like, how do we understand where the match is coming from? How much is the match? And then in essence, there's kind of a fence around that funding. So it can't be used for another project or, you know, in those priorities. And I just don't know that the CIP is very clear on that right now.
So Jeff, I've got a question here. So when, is the CIP, it, how much of a working document is it? So after we go through this sort of approval, approval process, is it sort of if we walked into public works, is it off the shelf, you know, marked up, right? Like how much does the staff rely on it?
So I think there's, there's, there's some critical things for a working document. What, what I utilize it for, what capital staff utilizes for is really getting that, you know, approval on the scope of a project from council. So when council sees those projects, we get kind of that big scope. So that when we seek funding or we go and we actually have the funding to move a project forward, we kind of have that, that publicly approved scope of the project. So we have this boundary around what we're going to do. And then how do we feed that into the budget? So I, I use it on an annual basis when I'm updating the capital budget. I use it when we initiate projects and we, we start those projects in the process of design, we utilize the document for the scope of that project when we fine tune that scope and that sort of thing. And so as in every day, I, I mean, I have a hard copy that sits here on my shelf that I utilize quite a bit, but it's not like it's sitting out on my table all the time. And sometimes I'm marking it up as we do things so that when we get to these updates or I get to that annual or biennial update, I kind of already have an idea of things that have been done. And I'm not just starting from scratch. But those, that's kind of really the key is how's the council want to prioritize the projects, you know, we, we present the laundry list of projects that we have a lot of need. And, and what does the council with the resources, not just funding resources, but staffing resources? How does the council want to prioritize those projects? And then what kind of scope do we want to, you know, how in depth do we go on certain projects and trying to keep that in line? So that way, I also know, the one thing I use it for is that way, if there's a change, a big change, I want to come back to the council to make sure that, hey, if the scope is getting, is creeping a lot, it's getting really out of control. We need to go back and make sure we touch base with what was really publicly approved or publicly adopted as the scope of a project. I hope that answered your question.
Other questions or comments? I don't know, Jeff, did you have more? Go ahead, Joe.
Jeff, just a quick question. I'm, I know that the, it looks like we're borrowing money from the wastewater reserves to start the projects, knowing that bond money is coming in subsequent to that to pay those back. And, and I'm sure it's probably come across my desk before, because I'm, I'm a commissioner on the MWMC. But I don't, I don't recall that arrangement.
So we were borrowing from local funds and in actuality, we never moved that, that funding source forward. So we had come to council. So the bond was approved and voted on and, and the voters approved the bond in, in November of 2018. And in order to get a jump on the projects, like consultant services and things like that, before we could sell the bonds, we came to the council with the proposal to borrow local wastewater funds. So as, through MWMC, we've seen that, but it was just really a interim loan to the street fund. And then what happened is our finance staff was able to get all of that work done really quickly. And so we didn't really need the loan in the first place. We were able to get the revenue pretty quickly by the time we had started signing contracts.
So that money was, that money didn't need to loan it also, but on the document it has, it is in there. So I'm just wondering if it's appropriate to have that struck from there or made, made more current?
In an update, yes, we would update that to show that that revenue or that language wasn't, we would take that language out. Okay. Refresh it. So that's where I, that's where I was going with the council, regardless of when we choose to update it, whether it's we update it here now, because I would propose that we come back and get a full update for the 2023 capital budget. That we would go through and do a complete refresh. And so if you have, so if I were to present you, so what you're looking at is the document that the council adopted in 2019, yeah, and ahead of fiscal year 20. And so that was the plan at that time.
Okay.
And so it kind of is a snapshot in time that only gets updated every couple of years, but internally we are still like doing in updating it on a daily basis or on a annual basis.
I get, I'm just, you know, concerned about people picking it up and seeing it for the first time, which is not, we've seen it before, but people picking up for the first time may, may be given a skewed glance at it and, and may take issue with some of those items. So I just thought I would bring that up publicly at this point. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions or feedback specifically about updating the schedule? Though there were two parts to this.
Yeah. And just as a reminder, so the current, the way the schedule's laid out now that we typically follow is we would start in October with council ultimately adopting a new CIP in April. Traditionally now with the evolution of the, the budgeting process, I'm working on the capital budget and, and department budget with the staff in January with finalizing that in February. And then, so it just isn't in alignment with getting that public feedback is, is where I'm coming from on the update of the schedule. And so I think it would be better to realign the schedule with an adoption by council before winter recess, which would then just dovetail and go line up really nicely with the budget process.
Yeah, and
That makes sense.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Anybody comments? Yeah.
That makes sense.
All right. What else do you need direction on?
So the other question would be, does the council want me to bring back a update for 2024 to 2026? Or would you rather just start the process and have a, have council adopted 2023, 2027 version, given that the budget is already, the draft budget is already produced and ready for the budget committee, which you'll be seeing here. You know, the videos and all that other stuff are already done and you'll be seeing that as part of the budget committee here and then towards the end of this month. And then so my proposal would be that just start a full update and, and have a new fresh CIP. And so because we've already got a CIP through 2024 that's adopted, and that's what was used for the current budget. And so anyway, I, I'm saying update the schedule and basically start that new schedule now.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, if something substantive changes, then I would say move forward.
Okay. So we'll probably plan on being back in front of the council in November with a work session to look at the new CIP update for the FY 2023 budget.
Yeah, that would be perfect.
All right. That is everything I need.
Great. Thank you so much, Jeff. We have a special session at seven o'clock. So we're in the same, same meeting link. So please come back at seven o'clock and we will do that.
Mayor, I apologize. We are not on the same link. It is a, a whole new link. I apologize.
And I was just, I wanted to let everybody know. So Christie's listening. So she wanted everybody to know that we've updated our webpage. So if anybody wants to see updates on current capital projects, our webpage, you can go click on the button, see the project, see what's awarded and where they're at on the city's webpage.
Great. Thank you.
I actually had that, used it the other day. Somebody had a question about one of the street bond ones. So it was very easy to use.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Bye.
See you in a while. Quick, in eight minutes.
We're just going to sign off of this and come back on with a different link, I assume. So
That is correct.
That's spooky. I'll try to find it now.
Okay.